I'm going to call the Sherwood City Council August 19, 2014 meeting to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call.
Mayor Middleton?
Here.
Council President Henderson?
Here.
Council Grant?
Here.
Council Folsom?
Here.
Council Butterfield?
Here.
Council Langer?
Here.
Council Clark?
Here.
Thank you.
I'll start with the consent agenda. Approval of the August 5, 2014 city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2014-058 authorizing the city manager to sign a successor intergovernmental agreement with Washington County law enforcement for the purposes of meaning participation in the interagency teams. Resolution 2014-059 authorizing the city manager to enter in an intergovernmental agreement with Metro regarding funding to implement the -- help implement the Southwest corridor shared investment strategy.
I move consent.
All in favor? Aye. None opposed. What we're going to do is take one thing a little out of order tonight. We're going to start with the Sherwood High School Student Academic and Athletic Achievement Recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think we had most of this two weeks ago, so we'll do the same repeat that I think you guys came down and shook folks' hands. I have RSVPs for the students that are here. I'm going to go through those first, and then I'm going to ask if I missed anybody who didn't happen to RSVP, and then after that, I will read the remaining names. This is always amazing, the tremendous success of our students. There were well over 100 names that we wanted to honor in the last two council meetings, so -- and as my assistant city manager said two weeks ago, if I mangle anyone's names, I apologize from the beginning. So with that is Shawna Anderson here, please. Burke Boyer. Alan Dans. And I should say, these are all for 4.0 grade point averages. Okay, is anyone here that I did not read their name? Because I want to make sure we acknowledge the folks that are here. Okay, so I'm going to read everyone else's name very quickly. You guys can --
One quick question. How many is there second year for this? Is there a third year? Thank you next year for a fourth year.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you very much. Real appreciate you checking down.
Okay. So Mayor and Council, I'm going to read these names to acknowledge their achievement. This next one actually took first place in the state 5A Boys Hundred Meter Hunter Pfeffer Corn. And then the rest of these are all 4.0 GPAs. Thomas Adamson. Ally Armitage. Hannah Atkins. Kenneth Ballard. Joshua Bamer. Kalen Bowen. Morgan Bowers. Daria Brant. Matthew Brooks. Hayden Brundage. Simon Brundage. Anthony Berman. Esteban Calderon. Connor Corrier. Savannah Case. Kayden Christensen. Kinsley Christensen. Tyler Christensen. Taylor Cluff. Taylor Cole. Taylor Cornow. Kellen Crosston. Taryn Denny. Jeffrey Das. Michael Daigle. Marissa Downing. Guinevere Duncan. Hannah Ellsworth. Garrett Fetchter. Madison Fioretti. Gabriella Fisher. Ariel Flack. Gage Fuller. Madeline Griffin. Riley Goff. Dana Grove. Gabrielle Hall. Tanner Hall. Camilla Hashimoto. Ty Hang. Kristen Hodge. Jaden Homer. Kyle Homer. Alexandra Hubbard. Mariah Jacobs. Lucas Johnson. Miguel Rares. Madison Carr. Malia Kirkland. Eric Klosterman. Connor Cool. Alexandra Kuntz. Caleb Lindgren. Lauren Mabdar. Chesney Mallory. Emily Marsh. Ryland Marshall. Daniel McNeely. Bridget McShane. Camry Milney. Hosea Ing. Ing Nguian. Makala Otto. Samantha Palladino. Andrew Peters. Kendall Puchek. Jacob Reimer. Alexis Reed. Peyton Reuter. Cassandra Rickard. Delaney Riggins. Rachel Robella. Avery Rosenbaum. Anna Roth. Kelly Roth. Adlee Rushman. Michael Schaefer. Richard Schmidt. Stephanie Schultz. Allison Schwarm. Taylor Shannon. Scott Skurdall. Brian Smith. Madeline Smith. Derek Snyder. Jenna Stobie. Micah Stoller. Sidney Stromeyer. Kendall Swanson. Gina Taylor. Cameron Theeman. Ryland Thomas. Adam Vasquez. Camille Vezinet. Arunama Vijay. Thank you. Griffin Weincheck. And last but not certainly least, Benjamin Windheim. Thank you.
I believe there's cookies and punch out there for you, and we want to thank you for coming tonight and hope to see you next year, too. Do you want to do the introduction?
Sure, Mayor, we can do that and get that taken care of. We have a new employee, and as is the custom, I want the department director, Brad Crawford, our IT director, to come out and do a brief introduction of a new member of the IT department. So Brad, I know you're in the back, so.
Come on, sit down. Good evening, Council. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Pia Park. She is our new senior IT analyst. She replaces our former IT analyst, who's moved on to a different opportunity. Pia comes to us from the city of Milwaukee with a wealth of experience. We are very pleased to have her with us, working on a lot of projects that have -- that are a lot of behind-the-scenes projects, but are really important projects, so we're happy to have her on board and let you answer any -- have her ask any questions and have her answer any questions you might have.
Just wondering, where are you from?
I'm from --
Where you live?
I'm originally from South Korea.
Oh, okay.
And I've been living in Oregon for about 20 years.
Okay.
Any more questions? Well, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have our first round of citizen comments. No, they didn't. They're just visiting. You're just doing your merit badge for sitting at a council meeting, but don't forget to eat some cookies on the way out if there's anything left. All right? Yeah.
You don't have to.
Yeah, her sign is cute.
We'll start with Josephine Claus. No Josephine Claus? Oh, come on. Oh, okay, then. How about Patricia Claus? Oh, never mind, you're up. Okay, come on. I didn't see you down there.
Mayor, we're having some clock difficulties, so one thing I can do is give this to you and I can either give it to you or I can give it to the person talking so they can see. I don't want to be rude, so.
Can I just give a 30 second?
I will give you a 30 second, okay?
Can you start my phone?
No, 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 no. The clock's not working, so I have to use my phone, so I'm going to give you a 30 second when we get down. So let me turn my clock on, I'm sorry. So it'll take a second.
Can you just check something over here?
All right, I am ready. Go ahead.
Great. I have just handed -- Is it on? Oh, okay, all right. I have handed you a series of documents tonight that we are asking to become part of the public record. The document first goes back to 2008, as near as can be determined, from the public documents assembled for you. Mr. Tom Nelson and Jim Patterson signed a contract to sell two parcels of land in Sherwood to a private party contractor in order to develop the two parcels of land into a 100-unit apartment building. As near as our investigation can tell us, there was a request for proposal to bid or come up with a plan for this ground. We do not know if more requests for proposals were made, and there is no record of the conditions. However, this contract required a series of land use zoning exceptions from Sherwood's regulations, and, if you will note, required the city to put in the streets, sanitary sewer, and stormwater facilities. The urban renewal project in Sherwood from day one has been unusual. It has been a mix of removing pre-existing buildings in the downtown and the development of farm ground formerly being zoned light industrial. Normally, a request for proposal would have been -- would have involved redevelopment of the entire cannery area with stated goals on what real estate tax base the city was hoping to obtain in order to pay back out of the so-called excess value real estate taxes. These taxes would come to the city and allow them to pay off these urban renewal projects having such a substantially increased tax base. The other agencies in Oregon who are losing their share of these real estate taxes would have increased revenues to justify the loss of this money and loss of their fair share of the real estate taxes for 20 years. The approach Sherwood apparently took on developing the urban renewal was not about -- was not around a comprehensive plan to be built immediately in the urban renewal area, but what a piecemeal approach. Of course, this is a major question we cannot determine by the documentation. The documentation we have been able to find is not inclusive, and therefore, questions must be answered. The key question is where and when was there a public hearing to talk about the sale of these two parcels of land? Are you suggesting the request for proposal was the public hearing? Or are you suggesting the public hearing where it clearly was not initially explained to the citizens that the contract had been signed and the citizens being there was a formality? Are you suggesting that was an adequate procedural due process? What is not clear and cannot be traced due to the record-keeping we have been able to obtain was whether or not it was agreed by the city council as if they accepted the plan, granted the necessary zoning changes to put apartments in this cannery urban renewal project, and granted a variance on parking. There are other exceptions in this contract from our land use code. Given the way in which public hearings are held in Sherwood, it is obvious you might suggest the request for proposal. Urban renewal meetings, which are not open to the public as a general rule, were where these decisions were made to grant all the changes necessary for the 100-unit apartments to be built. As we well know in Sherwood, we have an unusual form of public hearings. Questions can be asked, and they are not answered under advice of legal counsel. We are simply asking these questions to be answered in writing. In that fashion, we can pursue this with other groups such as Land Conservation Development Commission, et cetera.
30 seconds, unless you finish.
I'm done.
Okay.
All right. My father's going to hand you a series of documents that deal with the Oregon Constitution and the US Federal Constitution, specifically about free speech expression, right to assemble, petition your government for grievances, et cetera. They're, in a broad sense, what makes America distinguishable from many as an open and democratic system. My father was lucky enough to attend Leland Stanford Junior University, where two founding principles were true: We must always guide ourselves on moral and ethical principles, which is the reason Mrs. Stanford insisted that the church was always at the center of university activities. The university has a principle called the Fundamental Standard Committee, meant to help citizens honor commitments and uphold the highest conduct in principle and in life, meant to help all God's children understand that we are a society of principles and law and process, not a society of self-help. An educated person who cannot follow these principles simply is more able to exploit their fellow citizens than to care for them and honor their commitments. I recently had the chance to meet Governor Barbara Roberts. Governor Roberts is a straightforward Oregonian who began her political career by accident. She believes that all people have the right to be treated fairly under the law. It is a mantra for the governor. Governor Roberts runs on public policy, which is clearly enunciated. When an election was contested, public policy commitments always prevailed. In fact, if Oregon would have accepted her tax plan, revenue challenges could have been easily dealt with, and Oregon would most likely have been better off. More than that, Governor Barbara Roberts believes in the educational process. We've been blessed with many politicians, such as Senator Wayne Morris and Senator Mark Hatfield, who have helped expand Oregon's stature and governmental operations as a democratic bastion in the United States. My dad always says it's probably from the water. Just a sip, and it'll do. I am here merely to tell you that the First Amendment grants far more than freedom of speech. It protects expression in the form to expand these expressions. It has been expanded and elaborated on by our legislative statutes. The Fourteenth Amendment is ingrained in Oregon in many ways. There are generally speaking four kinds of speech or expression. The first is non-protected speech. Certain speech expression is not protected. Don't use threat and self-help. It's not just the Stanford principle, it's the law of the land. Next, you have normal commercial speech governed by the evidentiary standard of rational relationships. If you challenge it, you carry the burden of proof to prove it is not substantiated by the facts. Third is speech which is regulated in time, place, manner, and content neutral. This is a standard lawyers refer to as intermediary scrutiny. In other words, if the city or regulatory agency goes beyond time, place, manner, and content neutrality, the evidentiary burden of proof is shifted to the state. Lastly, we have political speech. This is the most protected category of speech and expression in the United States and Oregon. If the state attempts to regulate it, they are beyond merely writing the laws. They have the evidentiary burden of strict scrutiny and must prove there is factual-based research to support the restraints and/or prohibitions. But the Sherwood Sign Code does not separate this category of speech. They regulate it as they would regulate signs, like real estate signs. The public was told in the meeting that if you object to a political sign or any other type of sign on the right-of-way of your property, the city staff, under advice of legal counsel, is now allowing adjacent property owners to take the signs down and destroy them. The signs are merely attempting to increase the chance of a candidate or issue of being in the election. They're not trying to sell a product, goods, or services. There are other incidents on recalls and petitions where there have been attempts by political officials to stop the process through various forms of self-help. It would seem to me that you need a special blue ribbon committee with proven experience and expertise to direct the staff, as well as the council should do, as we did in kindergarten, have a timeout and speak to the public. No police, no advocate-based lawyers or secret meetings, just an old-fashioned public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Claus? Okay, Jim Claus? Oh, thank you.
I've attended many meetings over the years. In fact, I'm not sure there's a state in the Union I have not at one time or another attended a public meeting. Written on the subject, I'm generally expected on the subject. But I've never seen town yet that never read Ladoo versus Gillio. That's federal law. And it would caution you, Oregon claims to be more protective of the political express of freedom than any state I know. In fact, Stromeyer probably lost the election to governor because of his stand against it. He had a narrow interpretation. Nobody bought it. But I attended the most unusual meeting I've ever been last Tuesday, a week ago, this week, where it was actually suggested on the right-of-way, if you didn't like what was said on the sign, and Mr. Green was quoted as the authority, you could take it down. Now, that's self-help. Now, we've had police reports filled out on one counselor for attempting to intimidate the right to petition. We've already had one counselor caught with the sign of a nut, labored excuses. But this is the first time in my entire life I have ever heard this lady advocate self-help. That's the most ridiculous, that is the most foolish thing I have ever heard. What is self-help? Where does it stop? Does it stop when you murder somebody? What do you think we're having to trouble with people right now about trying to sell our ideas? They turn violent. And that's exactly what we're doing. Now, I'm going to follow this complaint all the way for a very simple reason. Political speech and expression are protected by strict scrutiny. You don't come up with some far-fetched standard, I don't want them in a roundabout because they cause traffic accidents. Travis Brooks, who ran Federal Highway Safety, is considered to be the greatest expert I know on government signs and public signs, would walk out of a meeting when anybody said anything that uninformed and ignorant. He said, "They're a directional device. They're read in milliseconds." And you think they kill people? He said, "I didn't think too much knowledge killed anybody, but I haven't lived long enough to see all things." I'm telling you very bluntly, I have never, in my entire life, heard self-help advocated in a city. Never. Isn't that problem they're having in Missouri now? A bunch of people all decide they're going to have self-help and start killing each other? You don't have a society. You've got a disorganized mob. You've got to honor killings. I saw that at Kesterson. Yeah, they were wrong. Later, the government said, "We need to get people." That didn't keep them from killing people. Now, of course, the government paid them back and did that. If they would have listened to the speech and heard what people were saying, they would have known there was a public safety and health hazard, but they wouldn't listen to the speech. People like that belong in jail. We aren't going to have a civilized society now or anytime when you revert to self-help. Our buildings have been vandalized. Don't worry about it. The police carried a gun in the meeting to suppress speech, not to encourage it. That's the message you're giving everyone.
30 seconds, I'm sorry.
That's the message you're giving everybody? You think you're kidding anybody when somebody asks a question and you use armed police? You arrest and confiscate and steal people's property? Good Lord, grow up. Let me tell you what the first time they paid money and it's a sickening, stupid remark I've imagined, given the great admiration I have for Abraham Lincoln. Right after he was assassinated, a fool minister was yelling around, "Hooray for Jeff Davis."
Thank you, Jim.
Well, they didn't do anything. They threw him in jail, and later, because they suppressed his free speech in the state, they had to pay him. You might start thinking about what you're doing, because, Bill, you're an ex-police officer. Why don't we just have self-help? We don't need the police anymore.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, there's a lot packed into those -- the comments of those three residents' testimony, some of which was accurate, much of which was not. I would just encourage you, if you have questions, legal questions about the Sign Code, to direct them to the city attorney through the city manager.
Under New Business. Ordinance 2014-015, amending Chapter 2 of the municipal code, creating and establishing the Sherwood Police Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The issue before you with this ordinance tonight is should the city council establish a police advisory board? The police advisory board would be created for the purpose of assisting the Sherwood Police Department establish priorities for the delivery of police services, including the types, levels, and quality of service, the department's strategic plan and goals, recommended strategies for the future, and a public policy on policing. The advisory board is expected to make service and funding recommendations to the city council. By way of background, on February 9, 2013, during a council work session retreat, city council was first presented with the concept of a police advisory board or commission. Then again, on January 21, 2014, the city council again discussed the concept and provided agreement to the concept. Excuse me, on July 15, 2014, during a council work session, the city council was presented with an actual proposal and framework for the police advisory board. Police advisory boards are similar types of commissions and panels are commonplace in the region and serve a valuable purpose to the police departments in the cities they serve. The creation of the police advisory board would provide yet another valuable opportunity for citizen involvement and input and would be a valuable -- for citizen involvement and input and would be a valuable tool of feedback for the police department in chief. There are no financial, excuse me, there are no additional, we'll get through it yet, there are no additional budgetary funds that would be needed for the creation of the board. Rather, current funds and staff time would be able to support the work of the board. So staff respectfully requests city council adoption of ordinance 2014-015, amending Chapter Two of the Sherwood Municipal Code, creating and establishing the Sherwood Police Advisory Board. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I have a question. So I read on the membership, your six-member recommendations of categories. And I was wondering, is this modeled after other police boards? Because it seemed unique in identifying particular parts of the community.
Yes, it's actually modeled after kind of, or let me rephrase that and say, I referenced two different models. One was other community and other boards and what their makeup was. And then, the other model was the special committee that was formed here in Sherwood and how those different representation was suggested for that committee. So I kind of went off of that and tried to create a well-rounded group of representation.
What other cities have a police board that are close cities to us?
Tiger does, Newburgh does, Springfield, they're not close, but Medford, but those are ones that I'm familiar with. I think Fairview has one. So those are the ones off the top of my head.
Okay.
The only question I have on it is, it goes quite a bit differently for membership than any of our boards or commissions that we have now. And any of these people obviously could apply to be on there. And you being one of the people that would be on the board, you can more or less select who you want. I just think categorizing them out, to me, is a little difficult because none of the others, none of our other commissions say like you have to be a member of the, of your volunteer organization or anything like that. And we're kind of limiting, actually, the Sherwood residents, because if you read the others, they could all be from out of the area. I mean, so I would, what I would like to see is something like five residents and four business owner, non-resident type situation of that. You know, I mean, I just don't like categories and especially a representative from this group, a representative from this group. I think it would be better if we made it more available to everybody. But you could pick, obviously, but we're not defining it. I have a hard time defining and not, this is, you know, I'm, a Sherwood faith community, that to me is something you can make the decision on, but I wouldn't want to make it mandatory in a committee. I just, to me, that, making a profession requirement in here, then we're going to have to require somebody who works at a gas station, somebody who, I mean, it's just, I understand where you're going, but I think that we should make it a little more free for you to choose who you want, but not specify who you want. So that's my concern with this. And I'd like to, that's the only thing I would want to see amended, just to not mention specifics. I don't think we do that in any other committee that I know of.
CERPAC.
What's the specifics on that?
Old Town Business, Six Corners, At-Large.
Yeah, because that affects them as a business, right? That it'd have to be somebody, yeah, Old Town is affected by it. And then, I would certainly be willing to obviously pick the people you recommend, more than likely, I mean, I don't see any reason why not, but I just don't, it doesn't show fairness to the residents the way I read it. So, I mean, we could, for Sherwood residents and three business and one at-large, something like that. So, but that's just my take on it.
Chief, do you want to explain why those three, four, five, and six positions were important to you or why you think those members would be important to the new committee?
Certainly none more important than any of the others. It was just my goal to try to get those major components of the community represented on the board. I think that you can certainly have the ability to select and recommend, you know, individuals for appointment, but you don't, you don't always have the ability to choose who applies and who you get to select from. So this was just to, again, modeled after what I had seen done in other places and just mainly an opportunity to try to represent major factions of the community, major components of the community. That's all.
I mean, I have to say that I like the category, the, you know, the areas that you're trying to hit in here. And I see where you're going with it, but I have to agree with Mayor Middleton that it kind of narrows the field. And I think that definitely going to the school board and saying, "Hey, we'd really like some representation from the school board. We would love to have someone from the school board on our police board." Sorry, school district, thank you. Or the youth community, or the faith community, but to say, "We're holding a position just for that group." I think it shows some special privilege that I think, I have to agree, that I think it should be more open to residents. And I think that, you know, business owners is good, and then maybe an at-large. I think that would probably maybe open the field to lots of opportunity for lots of people to apply.
So Chief, I think what I see you are hoping for is to sit at a roundtable and have stakeholders tell you in their big piece of the puzzle what their concern was. Like, bring concerns from the school district. Do you know how things are going? To the police foundation, is there ways to support? It's that big roundtable and getting everybody to sort of report in on their region. So I'm wondering, as I look back at my tenure in Sherwood and I see different organizations, I wonder, could you have them be liaison assignments instead of actual board members to keep it open, but have that liaison that could come in and represent a school district and say, you know, "I just wanted to carry what's being talked about here at the board back to the district." But then the citizens could then be completely represented. I just, I see, I see the real value in having those stakeholder groups represented at the table and really making a specific request that you want a member of the school district, you want a member of the youth community, so their voices are heard and so that they have a place at the table. But do you see another way that that might work? Or do you, because I, I don't necessarily agree that it narrows the field, because I understand what you're trying to do, but I understand that there's a lot of citizens that might want to be involved. So how can we manage both of those situations?
Well, to answer your question, yeah, I think that's certainly doable. I mean, we can, we can craft it however we want to craft it, really. So, again, it's just, just the goal to get, though, in my view, those residents, business owners representatives, faith community, police foundation, youth community, and school district, those are major components of this community. And it really covers, you talk about live, work, or play, that really covers all of it. There's, I mean, so that was the goal. I mean, we could certainly have liaisons and then, you know, from those different groups, so then we have a much larger group and we'll have to figure out, you know, how the procedural thing works with that, but we can certainly do it however council would like us to do it, so.
Well, I see that, so maybe what you could articulate is your vision for how is this foundation going to support the community? And by having those pieces of the puzzle, that's how it supports, is you hear the voices, you bring them to the table, you talk about concerns and ways to support one another and consensus building. So I think it's vital that you have those representatives at the table. So now we, you know, as a collective, have to come up with a solution that feels like it's the best fit. My experience on boards or commissions is that there are, when it's just a pool of applicants and citizens except for planning or budget, I would say that often there's two or three seats that might be vacant at different times. So I, you know, I don't know, trying to think out loud here how we make sure we offer the citizens involvement they want, but at the same time, we get the message from the stakeholder groups at the table, which is, I think, what you're after.
Yes. So I guess by way of suggestion, I think one of the numbers I heard was, instead of three and then the four other, or, excuse me, the six other representations to maybe change it to four or five residents at large and then some different, you know, or four or five residential positions and then the remaining at-large positions. I think that was one suggestion that was made. So, like I said, it's certainly doable. The goal is to get a group of people together that represent Sherwood. And that covers a pretty wide swath, as I said, and allow them to have the input in their police department. So that's the goal.
The other suggestion to piggyback on that is you could identify, let's say, it's a nine-member board, five members are citizens, and that you're trying to achieve a broad representation of the community, and you're not limiting to these positions, which you can identify, "We would like the remaining four positions to represent these following important components, the faith community." So don't make it mandatory, but send a message to the community that we have this new advisory board, and if you're involved with your church and you want to represent the faith community, that we're looking for someone to represent you. But not pigeonhole is kind of what I'm hearing from the mayor and Councilor Clark. Don't assign certain ones, because where do you draw the line? You could probably come up with others that you could say should be added. So that's one way of doing it is, you don't want the board being too big either. That's the thing that Jeff and I talked about. We kind of went nine versus 12. You know, 12, you get too big, it starts to get unwieldy. So that's another kind of suggestion that we could either craft here tonight or bring something back regarding membership. I'd like to hear from the other counselors as well about this, so.
Do you have one more?
Yeah.
Because you haven't gone.
Go ahead.
So Chief, do you have a problem with the mayor's suggestion?
No. This process is to bring it to council and get you folks in a place where you're ready to move forward with it. So if we need to tweak the language to do that, we can certainly do that.
What I'd like to see on that, too, is it's going to be your group. So if you have people you specifically want in there and you can sell it to whoever the liaison is, then bring it forward. I mean, nobody would be excluded because they belong to that community, but yet again, we're narrowing it too much. And it gives you a broader handle, too. What if we get somebody, and this has happened before, say, from the school district who doesn't show up a lot, or we get somebody, you know, we've had these issues before. You may not want to have that person if they can't commit fully to it. So, but it would be more or less, like I say, your decision and the liaison's decision to choose who you want and then put them forward.
Just have.
Hi, Chief.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Lang.
Yeah, I would say the way the chief has framed up actually provides the opposite of narrowing the field. I think it helps ensure that the police advisory board has a very diverse set of input, as opposed to, say, you just did all residents. Well, then you could end up with nine residents that are typically the people that sign up for things oftentimes are mad about something, they want to change something. So you end up with nine angry residents that all want to get on their police cloud, they need to change their behavior. And I think the way it's framed up here in the proposal, much like the URA, is a very healthy framework for the advisory board. So I don't really think we should make many strong changes to this as it's set right now. That's all I've got.
Council President. Did you have something?
I was going to.
Counselor Grant, go ahead.
Okay. I'm glad Counselor Lang went before I did, because that's what I was thinking. I believe that the defined stakeholders does the opposite. It broadens the participation by bringing in people who, that will give us a diverse group, instead of having a group that all could be of one mind. And a lot of these, for example, a representative from the school district could be anyone that the police department serves. And representative of the youth community, Sherwood faith community, these are broad, these are very broad-brush definitions of stakeholders that, and so there's really no way that this really pigeonholes it into a smaller group. It actually broadens it into a wider group. And so I like it. And we've got models of cities who have successfully done this, and that's always been important. I think it's well put together, and it's not unusual for committees inside and outside of the government world to use stakeholders defined in groups they put together for committees. And for that exact reason, it gets you better success. I think it's well put together, and I appreciate what the chief brought forward tonight.
I would like to advocate for the last two positions. A member of the youth community, I think, would be really valuable, considering a lot of interaction that our officers have are with youth. And secondly, advocating for somebody from the school district. And my rationale behind that is, functions from the fact that our police department is in charge of emergency management. And so I always think about, if we were to have a natural disaster at 1:00 on a Tuesday, a great deal of parents aren't in Sherwood. They're working outside of the city, and all of those children are going to be at the school district. And the school district, of course, coordinates with EMS, emergency management in that type of situation. And not that this board will spend a lot of time just on emergency management, but I'd like to keep that partnership between the school district going, and it's not just, you know, police services in a traditional sense, but it's also emergency management and the ability to keep that dialogue going. And having an additional school district employee coming to a meeting, I don't think is necessarily a bad thing. And I know sometimes they have individuals, and that position might change over time, but hopefully their line of communication will remain the same and that information, whatever they discuss, whether it's policies regarding the SRO or policies regarding emergency management, that will be one place to make sure that we continue to be on the same page if something were like that to happen in the future. The representatives from the faith community and the police foundation, I think, are important. I'd be willing to compromise and leave that up to, you know, the chair and the liaison from council and staff to determine if that wants to stay at large. But I have no trouble with the faith community. The faith community is also an important aspect in emergency management, because if people need somewhere to go, churches have facilities and spaces to, you know, to house people and in addition to schools. So I'm open to a couple of changes to maybe at-large, but I'd like to advocate for the member of the youth community, which I think is an important line of communication, and the school district.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just have one quick comment. You know, I think, just being sensitive, which member of the faith community are you going to invite? Is it going to be the Catholics, the Lutherans, the LDS? I think you could, that could be a problem.
All of them.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, certainly respect and appreciate all the feedback. If I can make a suggestion that I think will hopefully maybe hit the middle compromise of what we're hearing here. If we change the Section A language to read, "The board member shall be appointed by the mayor with consent of the city council by resolution and shall have nine members..." the mayor with consent of the city council by resolution and shall have nine members," probably comma or semicolon, I'm not an English major, "with an attempt to gain the following representation." And then we can leave the language the way it is and those numbers, 1 through 6, but that would leave it open if we didn't have somebody from that apply, or, you know, we could certainly shoot to try to get that coverage, but it wouldn't, but we wouldn't be limited to it, as was pointed out. So off the top of my head, that's the idea I have that maybe might accomplish what everybody's...
Just change the word consisting of.
I like that because none of these are, it's not that, at least for myself, it's not that I don't like, these categories are fantastic, but to say, well, we're not going to consider you, you don't fit in that little pigeonhole is, I just think that we should be more open to our public.
Absolutely. Again, that's the whole, that's the whole goal and the whole point of this whole process, so.
I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Why not a motion to amend? Is that the next step, right, to do that? We would move to amend first and then?
I think the mayor wants to hear from the public as well.
I'd like to let some public, if they'd like to come up and comment, they're free to, they just fill out a form. Gene Stewart.
Gene Stewart, property owner in Sherwood, but I've been around Sherwood most of my life. One of the things I think you're trying to accomplish is to get citizen involvement. But when you limit it to nine people with, I can see that if you had nine people, but then they should invite the public in to talk to them.
Of course it is.
And I don't see this happening.
Well, it says in here it's open to the public.
Well, it says it's open to the public, but only, you know, I guess I would foresee maybe like a town hall meeting. Let people come and speak their mind. I know when I was on the advisory committee for the urban, not urban, but for the planning, there was seven people on the board, but anybody who came to the meeting was able to present their ideas. And we would take the time and listen. True, this takes time, but you need to be prepared, especially the nine people that are appointed, to sit there and listen to what the people are complaining about. You may find that you have a bunch of people that are really, quote, upset maybe about red light. And maybe they have some validity agreement, I mean, arguments against the red light not doing really what it's supposed to do. But you need to give the opportunity for those people to come forward. Also, I believe is that instead of by different groups, why not look at if you can find different sections of the community? So you have maybe a representative from Woodhaven on the other side of town, so that you got representative on that board from all of the town. You could foreseeably have Arioban from Glen Eagle or from Woodhaven come, and is that representative of the people? I don't believe it, believe it is. So it is something, it's going to take a lot of work from staff, council, to get people to become involved. But if you invite them, you're going to have to listen to them when they come forward. If you don't, if you do it like so many of your other boards, they're not going to come. It's just like, you know, your renewal agency meetings, very seldom have ever seen where you've had, other than at a hearing, public comment like you have public comment at these meetings. Why not? You want people involved, ask them to be involved, and as we become more educated on our involvement, we can give you better ideas and help you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward?
I'm Dean Boswell, 22796 Southwest Lincoln Street, Sherwood, Oregon. First, I want to say I'm all for this. I tell young people all the time, especially college students who are, you know, protesters or whatnot, and they get mad at the police, that the police are only enforcing the laws that were put in place by the politicians you voted for. And I think, I think a good way to go is the nine-person board, you know, because you can pick, you know, it's like, oh, this guy's the pastor at this church or that church. So, you know, you don't have to say, you know, why you picked that person. So you have a larger selection, like you guys said. And one of the reasons is Sherwood is kind of funny. You get sometimes where you get a packed room and other times there's just crickets sounding and you guys are talking to the wind. And so you really don't have a large selection sometimes. But the other thing is, to add to that, is you can assign each one of the board members that you choose for this to interact with those people. Like, you're in charge of interacting with the churches, you're in charge of interacting with the schools, you're in charge of interacting with the youth. And not only would you have a wider selection of people to choose from, but you'd have board members who are actively seeking out information from these groups you're talking about. So I'm all for it. I think it's always good when, you know, when the people meet with the city council, with the police department, and we act as a community instead of little secret departments all over the place. So I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Anthony Bevel, Southwest Linley, Sherwood. I take exception to council member Langer's comment about not wanting angry people on committees. If I'm going to pick a committee, I'm not going to pick yes men and yes women. I'm going to pick people who are going to challenge me and who are going to make me think and make me want to get something done. If I want to pick a football team, I'm going to pick, you know, the best members. Then I might pick my buddies, but for something that needs to get done, as Syria says, you know, being a liaison with the police and conveying concerns, I'm going to pick concerned people. Maybe angry is not the right word, concerned people. So I think it should be open to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else like to come up and talk? One more. Two more.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kiper, and I'm, do I say my address? 17075?
You don't have to worry about it.
Okay, don't come find me. I just wanted to, I just wanted to affirm what Chief Growth is saying. I think the edits that you made are very simple, and I think that's a good compromise with what Mayor Middleton is saying, essentially not specifically calling out the four or five groups of people that are required, so to speak, to be on the board. Go ahead and just open it up and then actively solicit representation when the time comes for those folks to come and put their applications in. You're actively soliciting participation from these particular groups of people, and I think it would work out just fine. Speaking to the other, the first speaker that came, I forgot his name, I apologize. But there is public comment that is taken at a lot of the committee meetings. On the Sherwood Charter Review Committee, we took public comment before and after, so it is something that we do. And I'm assuming that the police advisory committee would do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my name's Tim Voorhees, and I've attended a lot of public meetings and stuff. And I keep coming to them. Sometimes I wonder why, because I've had staff members tell me that all public decisions are made prior to any public meeting. And that it's just a formality on, to make the people feel like they're part of the process. I hope this police advisory committee is something better than that. There's a lot of bad stuff happening in town, political signs being vandalized, other things going on, trespass. But history in this town repeats itself. A lot. Harassment. Like Jim Claus said, self-help. What's the difference between me going out there and taking down a political sign that I don't agree with in front of my place and a Chevy truck that I don't like and taking it down to the scrapper? Not one thing. Not one thing different. We need to get the people back into the process of this city. Seven years ago, approximately, quick story, hair on the neck stands on my neck at the Sherwood School District. Dog gets wiggy in the back of a truck. I leave, next day, nothing. Next day, dog gets wiggy again. Next day, nothing. Next day, there's a bullet hole through a no parking sign in the island. Call the police. Well, we can't go out there. We have to be asked by the city, by the school district. So I take the shards of the bullet because they were being scattered amongst the wall down to the superintendent's office, and they had to be asked onto the property. So, long story short, nothing happened. Citizens just got looked over, the whole thing. I'm worried about this town. I'm very worried. There's something wrong here, something hidden. Almost go as far as evil in this town. Almost a fight, good versus evil. And I hope that good wins. So the advisory committee should be for the people, and hopefully there's no agenda to lead it, like the co-compliance meeting. I had basically a speech like this with them. You're wasting your time. The city attorney just kept on edging it the way he wanted it to go. Every time the citizens and the pack got off to one way, they herded it back. It wasn't a citizen committee. It was led by staff. It was led by the attorneys. And that's my perception. So is this just another perception to make the people feel good about being involved with the system and all the decisions are already made? That's a question. Do we get answers? I don't know. I've never gotten one. So have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no more requests to speak, I'd like to bring it back to council, close the public hearing, and bring it back to council.
Can I speak?
Go ahead. Councillor Grant, I'm sorry, councillor Langer, go ahead.
Yeah, for listening to the citizen comments, I was just going to point out that Gene Stewart and Tim Voorhees are a good reason, a good example of why we need the framework for the citizen involvement that the chief proposed here, because they're both business owners, but they're not residents. So, for example, if you wiped out the two business owners and rolled those into Sherwood residents, then guys like Gene and Tim couldn't participate. And the whole idea here is to get as broad of input as possible, and I think we get that with the current framework, so anyhow, it's all got.
Councillor Grant?
We kind of have a, we have a suggestion, and let's hear what the other councillors think about making the amendment, changing consisting, I'm not going to make the motion yet, I just wanted to hear if we change the words consisting of to chosen with the objective of including. What are other councillors' thoughts of that before somebody makes a motion to amend?
Is that what you're suggesting, Chief?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'm supportive of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote, "shall have nine members with an attempt to gain the following representation, but not limited to the following."
Yep, I like it. Make a motion.
Well, did you have some further comments?
I agree.
Can I move, we read caption and adopt? Oh, I make a motion to amend. Ordinance 2014-015, and my amendment is to exhibit A.
Sorry.
Exhibit A, right.
Yes. To exhibit A, under membership. Under A, the board members shall be appointed by the mayor with consent of city council by resolution and shall have nine members, striking consisting of, shall have nine members with an attempt to gain the following representation, but not limited to the following, then a semicolon, and the six lines that the chief had written before.
Second.
Okay.
Sounds like that's on board before all we've been talking about.
Okay.
You do not need to repeat it, Councillor President, and yes, that is right on what I was talking about.
Okay.
So I move, we adopt the, I move, we read caption.
First, we have to vote to amend.
Vote to amend, yeah.
So, I've already seconded it, let's take a vote.
So this is a, this is a vote to amend the resolution, so Mayor, I believe we can just do a vote by majority, correct? A voice vote.
It's an order.
To amend.
To amend.
Yeah, so Mayor, if you just want to call for those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oh, opposed, none?
So now I make a motion to read caption and adopt amended ordinance 2014-015.
A second.
Second.
I think we have councillor Clark, or councillor Folsom as a second, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Still your second.
Ordinance 2014-015, amending Chapter 2 of the municipal code creating and establishing the Sherwood Police Advisory Board. Councillor Clark?
Aye.
Councillor Langer?
Aye.
Councillor Butterfield?
Aye.
Councillor Folsom?
Aye.
Councillor Grant?
Aye.
Councillor President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next business is ordinance 2014-016, approving the easement relinquishment located along the north side of southwest Minneke Parkway, northwest of Highway 99, back to the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Cedar Brook PUD project. Craig Christensen is not here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I dive into the particulars of the ordinance, I'm going to basically direct you to page 45 of your packet, which shows an exhibit of the easement area and of Minneke Road that I'm going to be discussing tonight. Basically, the ordinance is a relinquishing of an existing easement for slope water, gas, electric, communication service line fixtures and facilities. Generally, this easement was established as a slope easement when Minneke Road was created by ODOT. It is very wide and really is not necessary for it to be that wide. What we're asking for is a relinquishment of the easement back to ODOT. We will gain a PUE after that easement is vacated by ODOT as it becomes part of the subdivision improvement along Minneke. So basically, the city's going to relinquish the easement. It will go back to ODOT, and then ODOT, through its process, will vacate the easement, and we will have a new PUE established to meet city standards of eight feet wide.
Council questions? Hearing none.
I'll move, we read caption and adopt ordinance 2014-016, approving the relinquishment of an existing easement for slopes, water, gas, electric and communication, service lines, fixtures and facilities.
Second.
Ordinance 2014-016, approving the relinquishment of an existing easement for slopes. Ordinance 2014-016, approving the relinquishment of an existing easement for slopes, water, gas, electric, and communication service lines, fixtures, and facilities.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Grant?
Aye.
Counselor President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seeing no more citizen comments. I'll move to city manager and department reports.
Mayor and council, I have a number of quick items for the council and the public. First, I want to acknowledge, and I'm gonna pass this up to Counselor Grant, we did receive word this past week from the Government Finance Officers Association that our comprehensive annual financial report, also known as a CAFR, for this past year, was recognized for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is largely Julie Blums' hard work and effort, her staff assist with her, but this is really, uh, her project that she spearheads every year. And I just want to cite one sentence in this letter that's important for the public. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So I just want to publicly recognize Julie and her staff for achieving this for the second year in a row. So, with that, you can see that certificate being passed around. Couple other things for the public in terms of some activities. We are planning, as the council knows, to upgrade the playground equipment at Stella Olson Park, so we have selected three options currently, and we're asking citizens to vote on those options. We've had them down at Music on the Green, there is an online survey, and then there's a traditional paper survey upstairs in the hall. There's three different options, and we're trying to get input from as many citizens as possible about which style of playground we should replace the Stella Olson equipment. I ran this with my kids the other night, and they had a hard time choosing, so some good choices there. But it'll, it's a major park for the community, and it gets used, not just by a neighborhood, so we would like to get as much input as possible. So that's out there, and I want to remind folks of that. Another project that is moving forward that we would like to get some additional citizen input on is the dog park at Snyder Park. We will be holding an open house on Monday, September eighth, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM in this room, to solicit input from citizens on the design of the dog park. That's right before the park and rec advisory meeting, so we'll just piggyback right into that meeting, but we have a conceptual plan for the Snyder Park dog park, and it's time now to get input from primarily the users, or the future users, that we're gonna be designing something that we can be proud of. So again, that's an open house to get input from the public, Monday, September eighth, 5:30 in this room. And with the end of summer, there's two summertime activities I want to remind folks. August twentieth, the Woody Height Big Band will be wrapping up the Music on the Green series, as is the tradition here, that usually gets a great turnout. Mayor, I think you're introducing?
No.
Counselor Grant?
Counselor Grant, okay. Yeah.
So that's Wednesday, August twentieth, and then this Friday is the final movie in the park, and it's a movie called Frozen or something, so.
I've never heard of that.
Never heard of that, so. We've been getting good attendance at those.
Good.
We're back in the park, and the attendance has actually picked up, so that's this Friday as well. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me or any of my department staff.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, so, one of the Music on the Greens we lost to lightning, are we rescheduling that?
We tried to reschedule, but the band that we had planned for that night could not reschedule in time, so unfortunately, no.
I had a question from a citizen yesterday, and it was regards to sidewalks. They were saying that they're not gonna get theirs done for two or three years. It was, I can't even remember where the location was. He wanted to know, and I don't know if we could do this, if they wanted to get involved in the process now and do it earlier, is that possible, before somebody falls, or?
Can they opt in?
Can they opt in early?
So, we budget so much money for the sidewalk program a year, we broke it up in four quarters of the city, so how, how our stuff is written and everything, they can't right now.
Okay.
Uh, just because there's fifty thousand dollars, we spent fifty thousand dollars in the area that we're in, and we broke down the areas on, where the issues really, the more, uh, not, I can't say one issue's over the other, but yeah, there's bigger issues in some of the areas that we've chosen, so.
So would that be a code change, potentially, to allow that?
Would have to be through the whole sidewalk program, would have to change.
And is it, is it because you take care, it's most cost-effective to take care of one area at a time, and so you identify that area so that you're not splicing from one, so you're not saying, so the sidewalk that may, maybe Mayor Middleton saw was pretty severe, but maybe the entire area is not as?
Right.
Okay.
So we went into areas, and they were identified by high, medium, and low, there was more highs in certain areas, that's how we broke it down.
Okay, great, now I can respond to him, thank you.
Anything else, Mayor and council?
Well, we'll start with Chris, Counselor Clark and I, you work our way down that way and back up this way.
Okay, so, I just had a couple things tonight. I wanted to congratulate the YMCA for a fabulous family triathlon. This was, if people don't know the background to this, this was brought about by Kelly Marker. She brought the idea forward to help support the Sherwood Charter School, and this is the, this was the seventh annual. My family has had the great pleasure to attend all seven, and this one was no less fabulous than the last six. It was great to see lots more littles there, because as my children get older and are bigger in the group, there's lots more littles coming along to celebrate family fitness and just encourage that fitness for families. So it was fabulous, and so we thank Kelly Marker for bringing it forward, we thank the YMCA for supporting it. I wanted to also thank everyone who attended the Sherwood Knights Football Car Wash this last weekend. It was fabulous, great weather, and we had, I don't think we had a stop all day over at, at where I was at, so it was, at the Sherwood Middle School, it was, it was amazing. So, thank you to everyone who supported the Sherwood Knights. The Italian Festival this last weekend was amazing, thank you to Kess Rooney for singing, and Jennifer Harlow from Blue Plume Studio for doing the painting performance. It was, it was fun to watch, and it was beautiful, and I believe that Kess's mom bought it, so, good job. I wanted to announce Thursday, this coming Thursday, the twenty-first, Main Street is having their general meeting, it's at 4:00 PM at Rebecca Lodge, if you'd like to come. Friday, they are having, August twenty-second, they are having a cathedral performance of the marching band at the Sherwood High School Field at 4:00 PM. I'm sure that they would love to have you attend. Saturday, on August twenty-third, I'm, so this coming Saturday, I'm gonna be attending the Tuolton River Political Paddle Race, this is my third year in a row. It's to bring awareness to the Tuolton River Keeper Program. It's a whole lot of fun, and it's down at Cook Park. So, Tuolton River Keepers come to our refuge and do tours for children groups and for different groups, and they provide a wonderful service for our refuge, so I'm happy to support their programming. Oh, and Wednesday, August twenty-second, I got notice that Representative John Davis is gonna be having a get-together barbecue at Snyder Park. Everyone is invited at 6:00 PM. He is running again, if you'd like to ask him questions or meet him, he'll be at our Snyder Park. Oh, I also wanted to say thank you to Joe Gall for challenging Counselor President and I to the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge. What he didn't know is that my late husband Dell's father died of ALS complications, and this was, I was more than happy to take up the challenge, as were my children who dunked me. They thought that was a great idea, as, as is shown in the video. My daughter, I had many comments that my daughter seemed particularly happy about the whole situation, but it was, it was, I think, a wonderful way to get people excited and interested in looking into raising funds for this very, very serious illness. So, thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
I liked it.
Counselor Langer?
Oh, sorry, I'm just.
Will you look for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your turn.
Okay, uh, first, the YMCA announcements, the pool maintenance closure scheduled for August thirtieth through September fourteenth for their annual maintenance work. The upstairs area will be closed for some new flooring installation between September eighth and September fifteenth. During that time, there will be a few new cardio pieces downstairs on the sport court. There are, the new session begins September fifteenth. The YMCA golf tournament is September fifteenth. A project manager class is offered September twenty-sixth at the Y, and also, on September twenty-seventh, women's self-defense class is offered at the Y. Now, onto the Chamber of Commerce, get ready for the twelfth annual golf tournament on September eighteenth at Merryweather Golf Club. More details to come in the next coming weeks. And the Great Canyon Festival is just around the corner on September, or Saturday, October eleventh, at Archibald, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. That's all.
Counselor Grant?
Okay, uh, well, I was going to, uh, make a comment that we had walked through the community center, but I see pictures right in front of me, and I'm wondering if those were because someone else was gonna make that same announcement.
I just thought it would be fun to show some.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, can these pictures, Brad, can these be beamed to the, to the rest of the audience? We, some counselors, Counselor Clark, Counselor President Henderson, and Counselor Folsom and I, and some members of staff got to walk through the community center for the first time, which is a privilege, because, you know, there's a gate around there, and they don't just wander in there, and it was, it was quite fascinating how big it is from the inside, and it's really exciting to go in there. And so, there it is, you're looking at, okay, there we are, right there. Proof that I have more than one shirt in my closet. And, so, the other picture and that picture are kind of the front entrance there, that where the door's gonna be, and, and, uh, so let's, uh, there we go, there's looking, let me see, I think we're looking toward the back.
Yeah, that's a sound.
You're looking toward where the, the pullout seating's gonna be, and the, the upper open area is where the projector and video and audio equipment.
The sound booth, yeah.
Sound booth and all that. And you can barely see the bottom, the floor's cut away a little bit where the photographer is standing, and that's because that whole area is floating, a floating floor, and so, any kind of dance performance or any, any.
It's a sprung floor.
Any performance that, that would require some kind of exercise, it's, uh, it's the best way to have it. And as you can see, now you're looking back the other direction, that floating floor will span the entire stage area. About, the, the area between the stage and where the pullout benches are gonna be is gonna, it's gonna be an area where, even if the pullout, I call them benches, it's much more than benches, really, but anyway.
Auditorium seating.
There's gonna be a flat area where people can sit on the floor, like, for example, if my business was gonna have a dance recital there, we would put kids down there on blankets and stuff like that, and, and that's how you'll fit a lot in, or the whole place is flat for that kind of event that wouldn't need the, the pullout seats. So, extremely versatile, as you can see, a very high ceiling there, and very open feel, obviously, the way it is now. You see the pipes sticking up, that's for all the, uh, the services such as microphone or whatever that's gonna be near the stage. Now you're looking down on it from, I guess, from the sound booth, same type of thing. So, it's gonna be a very large stage if, if people want it. There's, there, we're back to the front, looking kind of where the front is. The, the, the stick building on the left is gonna be like the retail area that could be leased out, and, and that type of thing, so.
Any other counselors?
No, I think.
I was good, I had other comments, but it was.
Go ahead.
I wanted to see if other counselors, while we have these pictures up, I just wanted to get other comments.
So, one of the things that they didn't show, if we could go back to that first picture, the first two spaces there on the left that are out of the framing, that's the retail space, and they, the three along pine, and then the other large space next to the metal is the class, the one of the two classrooms.
Oh, that's right, classroom in there, yes.
And the other classroom is up on the top, and we had the privilege of walking up the ladder in our hard hats, and Kristen may not have wanted to wear a skirt that day, but...
I, I left before then, so.
It was fine. The bathrooms are really big, but what was really thrilling, I think to all of us, was the storage space is turning out to be great and big, and there aren't pictures in that of that, and the dressing room is very large. So, it was, it all felt, I mean, we've been looking at, the, the three of us, Counselor Butterfield and Counsel President Henderson and I have been looking at this, the plans for the last eighteen months, and we, we walked in, we're like, wow, this is way bigger. But the seating that you were talking about, if anybody's been to the Broadway Rose, it's that really nice auditorium seating, and we have actually sat in those chairs. We made them give us samples and pick the most comfortable one. So, you know, Counsel President Henderson has been involved in several community projects on steering committees like this. Counselor Butterfield and she were both involved in the Canary Plaza, but this is my first one, and it's been really exciting to see it go in the last eighteen months from, you know, drawings to this, and so, it was great. And we really, contractor, he put up a handrail on a ramp so we could go out on the roof, so they were great, and thanks to Assistant City Manager Tom Pesamir for taking us, and Kristen Schweitzer for being there with us, it was really fantastic. It's going to be a great community asset, and I'm not at all excited about this.
Nope.
I'm not at all excited.
I did take some pictures of the retail center, but I was, I had sent them to Brad, and they were quite large, so they probably didn't come through, but the retail centers, the retail locations will be three, one thousand square foot, potentially, places for tenants to go in, and those will be left basically a shell, so whoever wants to come in there if they need plumbing or electric, will have the opportunity to, to, um, to make that space fit whatever business or venture they're going into. And so, um, once we get the center up and running, at the same time, staff's gonna be going out and hiring a commercial real estate broker to try to find some interested, and I hope complimentary businesses to go into the center, which will help fund the ongoing expenses that the center will incur when it's up and running, so. Yeah. Is Kristen here?
She's not.
No, okay.
She's on vacation this weekend.
I had, I wanted to move on to other comments, but if.
Go ahead.
If anyone else wanted to talk about the community center, well, the pictures are sitting right in front of us, okay, all right. So anyway, that was, that was really interesting walkthrough. The other thing, last week, I, along with many members of council and staff, attended the ribbon cutting for the Walmart store, and like the community center, it's much bigger on the inside than it looks on the outside, but it was not like any ribbon cutting that I've done in, in twelve years. It was, it was really quite unbelievable that, that the number of people who came to take part, and they had, the, the, people have gotten to know that the manager, Scott, he's just an incredible guy, and he's got a staff, they're all just having fun. It was just a, a very festive environment to meet him and his staff and everybody, and it was just really exciting to see all those people, all just ready to just get back there and start buying stuff, and, which they did, after we cut the ribbon, a lot of people had things to say, and I think they gave away either about, approximately or exactly a hundred thousand dollars while we were standing there, to charitable organizations. For example, the Police Foundation, they got a check, but, but it shocked us to see the, their willingness to participate by, by just granting money to these charitable organizations. It was quite amazing, and so, appreciate, yeah, go ahead, Chief, do you want to say something to that?
I'm sorry, Counsel, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, sure.
The check was to Oregon Special Olympics on behalf of the Sherwood Police Department, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
That's okay.
Thank you for correcting me on that.
What Walmart did was answered a corporate challenge that was issued by Rosa's Restaurant, and they'd made a thousand dollar donation, and Walmart answered that.
Okay.
And so.
Okay, thanks.
Shameless commercial, we're waiting for other people to also answer that challenge for Special Olympics. Thank you, I just wanted to.
No, I appreciate you correcting me on that, I, I had that wrong, and so, but anyway, it was quite an amazing event, and really exciting to see all those happy faces in there, and I think the parking lot's been pretty full since, and so, a really exciting thing, I think is a great addition to the community, so that's all, Ed.
Counselor Butterfield?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is the lighting project at Edie Ridge and Laurelhurst and at the middle school is scheduled to be up and complete this Friday.
Wow.
Correct, Greg? So, the lights are up, it's just a matter of wiring them up and actually doing the testing, so that's something to look forward to, and I want to thank everybody that helped move this project forward. Secondly, over the last few... Secondly, over the last few months, I've been accused of participating in self-gain of money, funds, whatever you want to call it. I'm here to publicly say, I have no relationship, never done any work with Graymar. It's not what I do for a living. I've never done any projects at the Y and put money in my pocket. The only thing I've done for the YMCA is pay my membership, just like everybody else does, and attend. It's a great, wonderful place. Same thing with Graymar. I shop at Walmart, and I'm proud to say I do, but that's all I do. I've never, ever done a job with them anywhere, anywhere in any state. So, hopefully, that clears that up.
Dog Park.
Dog Park.
Open House.
Dog Park.
Open House.
Open House. And I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting. So, it's really critical that we do get the citizens to come and have input. I mean, we do have a board, and they have their own ideas, but we really are trying hard to make sure that the citizens come out and have input, so we get what the people want. So, make sure that you spread the word and attend.
Is that here? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Notice it, yeah.
Sure.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Great idea.
Dog Joe, Joe Doggett. Joe's going to dog it. Get it done.
Counselor Butterfield wouldn't tell you this, but one thing he has done is he often donates his time. He may not remember this, but five years ago, when the school district and the Voices for the Performing Arts were partnering on their first musical in Laurel Ridge, which was in its first year, the electricity didn't work to the stage, and it had been miswired, and it needed a pretty expensive part and a very expensive fix. And he just took care of it, and none of us ever saw a bill. So, thank you. That's what you do do, and he's done that for a lot of things. And I know the stadium had that sort of thing as well. So, that's what you're about, and I've known you 18 years, so I just had to say that. So, last weekend, I wanted to thank, the Cultural Arts Commission has a very active and busy membership, people who've had a lot of experience working in the arts, and they entertained an idea from a citizen about six months ago. Tanya Hamilton, a local author, came, and she is of Italian descent. Two years ago, she had a biography of her father published, and she was having another children's book published this summer, and she just came up with the idea in Italy on August 15th, they hosted, I'm going to butcher this name because I'm of Cansin descent, Ferragostos Festival. And they celebrated on August 15th, and I think there are actually Italians from Sherwood that were in Italy this year on August 15th celebrating that festival. It's a very big deal. So, she came with, to the Cultural Arts Commission and presented the idea of the Italian festival, and they needed, the Italian nonprofit that is working our region to gain nonprofit status is still in its infancy, and so they sought out a nonprofit to help sort of umbrella them under, as they started this festival. And so, the VPA actually, because Tanya's daughter is involved, we actually supported them through that, and the birth of the Italian festival happened. And I can tell you, they ran out of food. I was very disappointed because I didn't have time. But it was a fantastic event, hundreds of people came. Cass Rooney, many of you know as Artebia from last spring, he's also, he got several jobs out of this deal. I think a wedding in San Diego was offered to him by the Fiat dealership. And they put out a tip jar, and within five minutes, it was packed full. And he did it for free and for the love and the joy, and we had some of the late-miss kids perform with him. It was just a fantastic night. Appreciated seeing the mayor stop by. I know he had a busy schedule, but it was, it was one of those events. But having seen the cultural arts grow over the past 12 years of service with them, as well as city staff, we talked a little bit afterwards, the city staff, and they said it was just a great festival because Tanya, who was in charge, was so communicative with staff. Darren was fantastic, Jennifer and Kristen were fantastic, but the communication was better than I have ever seen it. That special event permit really helped, it was very detailed, very helpful in knowing what to ask for. The Plaza is a really great facility for those events, and I remember, yeah, the built-in speakers, and we're still learning how to use it, but it was nice. Kids were playing in the fountain, so I just had to thank the Cultural Arts Commission, and especially Tanya Hamilton, who did have her book there and had a book signing and was donating all the proceeds to the Italian Portland School nonprofit, which was very sweet. So, I also wanted to congratulate the Old Town businesses, because as I've been walking down there this last summer on the evenings, walking my dog, they are packed and happening, and it is, it is just a fantastic place to live right now in Sherwood. I'm really proud of all that's happening, and I continue to appreciate their unification and supporting one another to make things grow down here. And I, with all the wonderful summer events we have, I just wanted to thank our Public Works Department for the very, very hard work that you do. I have not been to Movies in the Park the last two years because we had sabbatical and a wedding last summer, so it's been a while. But that's the biggest movies in the park I've seen in five years. And it was slower last week because it was The Goonies, and there was only 450 people instead of like 600. So, congratulations, because they're running smoothly, everything's very clean. I ran into one of your workers at Murdoch Park, and they're just so generous with helping, and, oh, we're out of dog bags here, you know, so I appreciate it. Police are another, I really want to thank all of you for your presence. We have one of the safest communities in Oregon, and I could not support your department more, and you have my wholehearted support in anything that you need, and their presence at all the festivals, and just the way, one of my favorite things is when we do the musical in the summer in the Plaza, they kind of come and go as they can, and I just appreciate our actors and actresses sitting and talking to them, and it's very meaningful communication that's happening. So, thank you for all you do, and that's it for me.
Counsel President Henderson?
Okay. I feel like I should make it short.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's always fun to follow Robin. Just like to remind citizens and members here tonight that the city council referred five ballot measures to the voters, which will be on the November 4th election, and information is available on the website. Yes, thank you. And obviously, will be in your voter's pamphlet, and if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to anybody on council or staff if you have questions about the charter amendments that are upcoming on the ballot. And I want to thank Joe Gall and Sylvia Murphy. The Charter Review Committee is essentially, I guess, on sabbatical, unless it's maybe reconvened in the future, but we're certainly being seen as a model for other municipalities to follow because of how we went about setting up the citizen-led committee and taking public comment, as Jennifer Kuiper said. And I think that's a, you know, a compliment to our process, and it's a form of flattery when somebody else models what you've done, and I think we did it carefully and thoughtfully, and hopefully, people will vote in November. Secondly, there is a, an additional sign code meeting this Thursday, 6:30? No? No? Sorry.
The date hasn't been firmly set. We're looking at September 4th. It will be after the, all the candidate filing deadline is passed. We haven't, we haven't firmly said it, but we're kind of looking at that time period, the first week of September.
Okay. So, sign code meeting coming up. And just wanted to remind folks that school will be starting soon, and that obviously we have a multitude of school zones in our community, and, you know, young kindergartners and excited first through probably fifth graders will probably be running out into the streets, so be careful when you're driving through the school districts, or school zones to maybe take a little extra time getting your kids to school or getting to work. The first couple of weeks, there's always a lot of activity, and people coming to school and dropping off, and just want to make sure that people are thinking about that after Labor Day, when school starts on September 3rd. And then, my last request would be to, tonight, we, when we spoke of the Police Advisory Board, one of the partner members that is likely to possibly apply to be on that committee is the Sherwood Police Foundation, and I, for one, would like to hear more about what that organization plans to do or hopes to do. And I know we had a few members here tonight who were interested in the Police Advisory Board, so I'd like to make a motion that we invite them to the September 16th council meeting for, I guess, under presentations, and have them, maybe have an opportunity to introduce themselves to the community and find out what their mission and plans are on that September 16th meeting, since we're not meeting on the first meeting in September.
I'll second that.
Sorry, if I may, I don't have the council rules in front of me, but I think as we amended them, it would have to be a motion to place it on the agenda plan, or what is it called?
Agenda Forecast.
The Agenda Forecast, because placing a, a request to place something on the agenda under the council rules goes to the city manager to go to on the agenda forecast, so you can do it that way.
Right. And I have made that, I have made that request, and twice it's been removed from the agenda, so I would like the council to take a vote to invite the Police Foundation. If the mayor so chooses to remove it again, he may, but I would still like the council to weigh in on whether or not they would like to have...
And I think there is a process that we put in the council rules for adding agenda items, but I think it's at the meeting.
Yeah, I'd rather not. I would consider that to be sort of a walk-on, and it wouldn't give necessarily the public the opportunity to come and hear about the foundation in a presentation. We did it tonight, we've done it for many other organizations, and I would just like to invite them back in September.
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so if it's approved, we'll, you know, I'll work with the city manager and see if there's a way to add it to a future agenda. Ideally, the one identified in the motion.
Can I have a clarification? So, Chris, are you saying that the motion is not a based motion in our current council rules? Is that what you're saying? Because I'm a little confused by your comments.
Yeah, I don't have the rules in front of me, so I apologize. I'm going to take it as an advisory motion, because it may not be consistent with the council rules, but until I have a chance to consult with him, is that one, yeah, that was kind of vibrating. I don't know whether we can do that. I don't know how to get something on the agenda in this fashion, and it may be that your motion is fine, but I don't know until I have a chance to sit down with the rules and the city manager.
Okay, but should we be voting on something that you're not sure is a motion that is...
No, no, it's a motion and a second.
Okay.
I'm just not sure we can give effect to it.
Okay.
But we will report back to the full council, certainly. And it's, you know, the larger question is, how do you, how does a majority get something on the agenda? And I thought that we had dealt with that in the council rules, so now I need to go back and look at the council rules and see if this is the proper method for doing so, and if so, then we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Do you have them, Joe?
Yes, oops. Yes, I do. So, I'm going to read probably more than you want to know, but it's important to know the whole context. It says, in terms of agenda, "The mayor, in consultation with the city council president and city manager, shall prepare the agenda for city council meetings. An amendment to a published city council meeting agenda must be approved by the mayor and council president prior to a council meeting with sufficient time to allow the public to be notified of the change." And then, underneath that are three sections. Section A, "A council member may propose an amendment to the agenda by motion under approval of agenda. A council member will endeavor to have a subject the member wants considered submitted in time to be placed on the agenda and attempt to notify the mayor and city manager in advance of proposing a change to the agenda." B, "A council member may request through the city manager that an item be placed on an agenda. The city manager will place the item on an agenda forecast for the mayor and council president to review. Council members will make best efforts to reach consensus on the agenda and should obtain staff input before requesting an agenda item." And then, item C is about the timeframe. Agendas will generally be set to allow meetings to end no later than 9:30, so that's not really about getting things on the agenda. So, that's the current council rules related to agenda creation.
So, to A, "A council member may propose an amendment to the agenda by motion under approval of agenda." One of the things that we need to make sure that we add to future agendas is approval of agenda, and the council rules set forth a proposed, a list of headings, and so I noticed tonight, we don't have approval of agenda on the agenda. So, under the council rules, a proposed amendment to the agenda has to occur under approval of agenda. That said, if it were done so, I think under 2A, it could, an agenda can be, well, again, it's like the walk-on. It would have to be that night's agenda. I don't see a way it means under the current council rules to have an item added to the agenda in that fashion.
So, if I asked for the Police Foundation to be put on the agenda, then it was removed again, it wouldn't be noticed to the public that the meeting was happening and that they were making a presentation?
That's correct.
Which is frustrating, and that's why I'm making my second request, that we invite this organization to give a presentation, as they will potentially likely be part of a citizen board and a partner in our community.
So, staff, what do you need to see?
Why won't the mayor put it on the agenda?
I can talk to you about that offline.
Oh, we're all here, and we can't have a meeting?
Yeah, let's just talk about it. How about a little transparency here? Why is this such a big deal? I thought it was...
No, I'll talk about it later.
If we want it on the agenda, we can do it. And now, the council president has twice, and you keep telling, no, what's the, what's the real story here?
I will bring that up later during our meetings with the council president.
So much for Cass Bantley.
So, we, you know, again, at a minimum, I think we deal with this as a request that it be placed on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, and I believe the mayor, when we meet, like we normally do, Mr. Mayor and Council President, we can have that conversation. The next meeting is until September 16th, so that's the way I would suggest we handle it at this point, so. You have a motion on the table, I don't know if that has to be voted on, or is that...
Real quick, can I just jump in here?
I'll go on.
So, when you guys get together eventually, will, will you tell us why, or, okay?
Absolutely. So, with respect to the motion that's on the floor, it would not be effective even if approved, so the best alternative probably is to withdraw the motion.
I withdraw it.
I withdraw the motion, but under duress and without justification.
Well, do we need a motion to put it on the, on the agenda forecast?
No, I think there's enough interest from members of the council for me to do that. I think the next step is the mayor, council president and I will meet when we do the agenda, and the mayor has indicated that he will, you know, state what his concerns are at another time, and we'll go, we'll go from there. I mean, that's my suggestion.
Let you know this is a dictatorship.
I'm embarrassed that we have to even have this conversation.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.
Oh, thanks, embarrassing.